Men of the board. So I've got seven oh two and I'm going to call the meeting to order. All members are present here from the public. Here from the public, seeing none, we'll move on. First selectmen's briefing. Just want to remind everybody in the record, we've got a town meeting coming up this Saturday, the 11th of February at the Ashford School at 10:00 AM. There'll be a public hearing, which will be followed by the town meeting to vote on a proposal for a $5 million funding for that project. And my intention is to open a public hearing and have Jim Rupert give everybody an oversight on how we've got to where we are right now and be able to answer some general questions. He's been involved in this as you know from the very beginning. I'd like to thank our.
Yes. Bill, before you move on on that one, um, how does what we've gotten for information from Mark Chapman come into play in terms of what's presented at that meeting?
Well, what I thought we would do would be make copies of what he said about in impact and everything and be able.
And so he had, so he has two versions. Right?
I believe so. I would say his last version was the one that I was thinking about making copies of and dispersing those.
His last one. Okay. So both of them were included in our packet. So you're saying the second one?
Correct.
Okay. Right. Ultimately, do we need to make a motion on that to be that's the one that gets presented?
Well.
How do we do that?
If you're comfortable with that, I think it's just docu, support documentation, but if you feel comfortable to vote on that, we can.
So when, when the town is voting on this, are they voting on? Um. They're voting on the $5 million number.
Right.
Are they also voting on how long the term is, that kind of thing for the bonds?
Yes, and, and, and our bond council is going to be there and give an overview. And a, and a decision on whether to go with a 15 year or 20 year.
Right. So the second one was the 15 year?
My recollection, I don't have it in front of me, Catherine, but.
All right, I'll look at.
It was our option to go with a 15 or 20 year.
And from a selectman's point, point of view, which one are you saying is more? Palatable.
Now, our, our 15 year will be more upfront money. The 20 year will be more costly. I prefer to go with the 15 year.
And we have the tax impact. On folks.
I mean, what I, what I intention, my intention was beside an agenda. We'll give our financial consultants summary. We'll have a copy of the resolution. During the public hearing, what we'll do after Jim Rupert's visit finishes his presentation. We'll have, we'll have town council give an overview with the proposed bonding issue and what questions have to be addressed. And taking questions from the audience. And with whatever and following that, then we would adjourn the public hearing and go to an actual vote with the town meeting.
And the vote of the town meeting will be to select, also to select the 15 or 20 year proposal.
That's my understanding.
So have we phrased that question to them ahead of time?
Um, nothing more than legal notice that, that appears in the citizen.
I'm, um, I'm a little concerned, I'm a little concerned because I'm thinking that when we do this, it should be saying, it hasn't, it has an impact on the taxpayers. So shouldn't we be telling them which one to vote on or giving them the option of either one?
Yeah, and I believe bond council is going to explain that. Both motions could, could be made. I guess, but, but the prevailing one, I, it would probably be a good idea to make a recommendation from the board of selectmen. If you're comfortable for doing that, I would support the 15 year.
I'm just looking at what the impact, impact is on the 15, from the 15 year on taxes for folks. So we look. And we said that's, sorry, there's, they are so much alike. That it was a little tricky going through them. So on one of them, I can't, again, not obvious which one. One of them says the tax impact, I'll just take next year, 2025 is $84. Uh, on a median home, 36 on a hundred thousand dollar home, and I don't think we have a ton of those here. I know we have some. And then the other one is 84 and 36. That's what I got in my packet. For two of them that had the same impacts. Thirty-nine. Table five to 15 years. Oh, hang on. He put two of them in the same one. All right, six, table six, 20 years. Okay, so the one that's 20 years has a total impact on the taxpayers of $1,211. But let me just look at the years. So one of them is, the 20 year is $78 for a median home and 33 for a hundred thousand dollar home. I'm sorry, per $100,000. Okay. So, yeah, I think, um, and in terms of how much more we're spending if we go with the 20 year? Or how much more it will cost us?
So I mean, I've got two numbers. You mentioned the 84 and now there's a 78?
Yeah, 78 is on the 20 year plan. And actually, actually, what I like to do is, why don't I do this? Why don't I make a motion to add this to the agenda so that we can actually properly talk to it?
I think that's a good idea. Sure. Is there a second?
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to add the review of the review and action on the uh, proposals from, is he bond counsel? What do we call him?
No, he's financial advisor.
From the financial advisor?
Is, is bond counsel.
Okay, proposals from the financial manager on the financing for the uh, school roof.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Do we want to do that in the middle of my selectmen's briefing?
No, 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 we can put it at the end.
Okay.
And again, this is assuming we spend the full $5 billion bond.
Well, it, it would be any portion of the fund, funded or its entirety.
Yeah.
I think what the one question is, do we want to do it for a 15 year or 20 year?
Yeah.
And let's make sure the implications are clear. So that's, so we're now, we're going to vote on adding it to the agenda.
All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. All right, we will do that at the appropriate time. Getting back to selectmen's briefing, Adam Four, I'd like to thank the, our emergency management director for his availability on Friday and Saturday during our bit of a crisis with the weather, also the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department and DPW and, and their hard work during this time. I know they were quite busy between the winds and falling branches and involved trees. Luckily, we had several, well, not luckily that we had roads closed, but we had several of our lighter traveled roads that had to be closed, none of them for extensive periods of time due to the diligence, both of DPW and the fire department working together. And Eversource was quite responsive. And again, their communication skills continue to be improving. I'd also like to thank St. Philip's Church here in town. They voluntarily, I got a call. Um, offered to open up their, uh, uh, their center as a heating warming station, if the need arose. I don't believe any families had to take part of that, but it was nice to have an option of that. And as, we also made the option available for the senior center. Um, Eversource and Aspen and Frontier continue to work throughout town on installation of fiber optic installations and tree removals and trimmings. You'll probably notice many of our thoroughfares have guarded work, traffic stoppages on, and they seem to be going on without incident. And appreciate their efforts on that.
We're still getting some concerns from people about, um, we got one, an email from someone. Uh, no tree trimming or Eversource review on the circuit for what Horse Hill? Uh.
Since, since that I contacted them, I believe I copied you guys an email, but I did contact Eversource and there is trimming. They started again last week. And there is trimming taking place on that.
Very good. Thank you.
The, the, the problem on that, most of Horse Hill is serviced from North Road. Yeah. And they have not been, although, you know, occasionally they've had an outage, but nothing like the group of homes that have been in service from 89 through the south part of Horseville, who experienced last year, when I checked in December, they had had nine outages alone. And I've asked Eversource not only to do tree trimming, but they volunteered, they're going to be checking all of their transformers and wiring there. And they said they would look in to hook them up to the same North Road distribution to see if that alleviates any of their problem. I haven't got a report back from them yet, but they are working on that. Uh, the new gas fuel tank has been installed at DPW. I'm hoping that it's going to be online by the end of next week. And we'll be able to start utilizing that. I'm told as we pay commercial prices right now, that we'll be probably saving in the area of a dollar a gallon as well as having it to our availability 724. So that's going on. I'm happy to report to you that the street light is now up and operating at Upton Road and 74.
I saw it. Fantastic. Nice job.
Better than it, much, especially going in there on a Wednesday night. But they're still working on getting Old Town Road and 89 done, but so that's up. Um, I had a meeting last week, last Wednesday with the subcommittee of the Trumpco House Committee, Joan Boley, my gardener and Chuck Funk. Um, notes were compared by everyone there. Chuck and Mike had expressed some concerns about a lack of a site plan that would delineate wetlands and also being able without that to give proper consideration to obviously a new septic system that would have to be installed. Um, in as much as everything else that we're looking at there. Chris advises me, I haven't seen it yet, but there is some sort of a site, a site plan available for that site. It was done a number of years ago. What I did advise, um, the committee that I would do is I'm going to talk to Bob Hurd and also uh, Nekog, Sil, their engineer there. If we do have a site plan to take a look at that and see what we have to do with the wetlands have not been mapped, obviously, we're going to have to do that. Find out what the cost of that. So the end result, we met for about an hour and a half. The end result was that we're going to have another meeting once we do a little more research on what documentation we have at hand. If in fact a site land, a site plan exists, and we'll take a look at that. Um, there were alternatives that, that, that Mike and Chuck brought up. Primarily expressing concerns about the foundation and what could be done and the cost of improving that foundation as compared to perhaps considering moving those buildings to another location, either onsite or somewhere else and pouring a new foundation. Um, those are the sort of aspects, of course, you know, Joan emphasized that representing the historical committee that their, their main goal is preservation. And so somewhere down the road, we're going to have to ha, reach a happy medium between the parties and, and figure out what position we're going to take on it. But I'll have more to report to the board as that progresses, but.
Has, did anybody, did anybody on that committee go into the building to see his current state?
I don't believe so. I know they didn't ask me for a key. Chris, did you give either Mike or Chuck the key? To go in to look in the building? I don't believe so, Catherine.
Um, because it's, it's overrun with mold.
Yeah, I, I know you mentioned that before and I, I've been meaning to get in there. I just haven't had a chance. Uh, but that's definitely something's got to be looked at.
And which, which mic are you referring to?
My gardener.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the only other thing, there's a couple of things that I'd like to add to the agenda and we can do that after our discussion with the resolution for the bond. Would be further discussion regarding the webmaster designation. And also the Ashford Parks and Recreation appointment of an interim chair. But once we get to that point, the agenda, I'll ask for a motion for consideration to add those two items. I don't think either one of them will take very long. All right, acceptance. One, one second. Bear with me. Sorry. All right. Acceptance of the minutes of January 17th.
We, so we accepted those.
Okay, uh, except for the minute.
We did?
Um, it says on note five for the minutes on January 31st that we said that the minutes of 117, 23, Silver Smith, second motion which passed unanimous.
Okay, um, I did notice in those minutes. Uh, I'm trying to figure out which ones we got here. Give me a second.
I noticed there's a couple of obvious corrections on the January 24th minutes. I don't know if that's what you're referencing.
Uh, no, I was, I had looked at both because it was on the agenda and I didn't think to go back and double check to see if we had approved them. Um, there was the motion to uh, put Andrew Doring on the not Roger. That was the only thing I found.
You broke up there, Catherine.
The motion to add Andrew Doring as a full member of the um, Parks and Rec Commission was made by me, not by Roger. I went back to look at the video because I was thinking I had made that motion. So, and that's from the 17th. So I don't know how we want to handle that.
Chris, can we go back and, and re-correct minutes we've already accepted? Or just maybe.
We can just make a note of, I'd like to just make a note of it in this meeting's minutes.
Okay, that's fine. All right, the, um, minutes of January 24th, I noticed up in the heading. Um, we should cross out agenda and indicate minutes at the top of the page.
Yeah.
And also members present, it has Falletti, Phillips and York. In place of York, obviously, it should be Silver Smith. Um, I didn't see anything else, but I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as the the notice amendments.
I'll make that motion.
Roger made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, folks. Hear from boards, commissions or committees?
Oh.
Aye.
Were we going to accept the minutes from the 31st or here as well?
Yes, yes. Excuse me. I will entertain a motion for the minutes of January 31st.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any corrections, additions? Or?
No, there were a couple, couple of typhoons, but they're no big deal.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you again. All right. Um, any boards, commissions or committee? Comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Old Business number seven, status of the after-school child program.
Uh, I'm sorry, bear, bear with me, Bill. I couldn't find those minutes, but I had actually noted on them, just so you know. I left the meeting at 10:36, so I was not present for this, because I had a doctor's appointment.
That's right.
But I was not, I was not present for the discussion about the commissions, um, where it went from that point on. I don't have any issue with what was done. I'm just making note that, um, that's the one where I left at 10:36.
And I have a motion to revisit the approval we just made for those minutes.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And you want to make your?
Yeah, that's what I was, I was trying to find them here in my pile of minutes and whatever. Um, what it is, what it was, was, uh, I left for a doctor's appointment at 10:36. And at that point.
I think the bus was the only thing we talked about.
Yeah, the bus was.
Committees.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you hear me?
I heard you.
Okay.
So the motions were reflected. Catherine left 10:36.
Yes, and put it, and it would be, should be stuck in the minutes at the point above, or you know, above the uh, commissions and committees. Appointments. So there's obvious when I was not there.
You good with that, Roger?
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, um, under old business, status of the school children program, after-school program is proposed by the recommenders. Um, I am not ready to make any recommendations or to recommend that we go ahead with our interviews. Um, one of our four interested parties have withdrawn. Um, she's had an emergency come up in her family and doesn't want to have consideration at this time. Um, while we have one application in hand, we have a resume and references and a letter of introduction from the other. I have emailed her and asked her to fill out, just to keep everything consistent, a town application form. And I'm waiting to hear back from her. Um, the third person that also expressed an interest, I also emailed last week and asked them to fill out an application. I haven't heard. So hopefully I'll have some more information for us at our meeting next week, but I don't, I don't see it appropriate to proceed at this time.
I agree.
All right, number eight, new business boards, committees and commissions. Um, I don't think we have anybody to recommend at this time. The list did get a little shorter. Uh, item B, tax refunds. Chris, you said we had one. You're muted.
Uh, Timothy and Don Walsh. In the amount of $880.54, signed in statute 12 dash 129.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, folks. Discuss and or act on setting a special town meeting date for proposed ARPA allegations, allocations. Uh, the, the, the one thing that needs our quickest attention is something that Roger and I had voted, and this is after you had left Catherine, although I think we mentioned it to you, but um, to purchase a small bus, 24 capacity at the request of the school in lieu of next year's anticipated regular sized bus. Um, which incidentally now costs 135,000. The, um, allocation in 90,000 will need to be approved at town meeting uh, for that allocation.
So let me ask, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
The, um, so originally there was a school bus in the capital improvement plan. Is that correct?
The, yes.
And this bus is for what year?
Next year. We have one coming this year that we're paying for with ARPA funds. And what we're recommending is that next year's also be paid with ARPA funds.
We, we pay.
A bill and Catherine, the understanding, excuse me, was that they're getting mid bus in lieu of a full-size bus next year. They feel that'll be more beneficial to their roots.
So.
Again, there's no full-size bus.
So. Give me a sec here. I gotta look at our list.
So the full bus that was on the five-year capital plan for next year will now become a mid-sized bus.
Right. So why wouldn't we leave it on the capital improvement plan?
I.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, why wouldn't we adjust it on the capital improvement plan or whatever? Instead of cutting into the ARPA funds?
Um, well, I mean, that's the board's pleasure, the, the.
I think of.
We felt that it would be less, I, I felt it would be less impact on the tax roll. Even though I know those are paid with. Even though I know those are paid with, with a separate funding source. But there's been concern for the past several years about a depletion. Of the capital non-recurring fund. And if we have a means through ARPA to pay for that, which it seems we do under municipal services. That it would be less impactful. Uh, to do it that way than to go into and utilize capital non-recurring fund. Because I, while I haven't got the forms in from the departments yet. I do understand that the school is going to be putting in for a uh minivan for special ed. Uh, in next year's plan, and I guess we've been putting that off for three years. And my indication that I got from Cindy, although again, I haven't got anything in writing to share with the committee. Uh, is there also going to be asking funds be allotted for a new generator up there? So.
So.
So it has to be in the, in the plan anyway.
You know, the, the schools, school buses are a regular part of the capital improvement plan. A new generator, that's a different story, okay, other than us understanding that their generator was getting old. And it should, you know, should be replaced.
And blew up.
I, I guess I'm concerned about dipping into ARPA for kind of sort of everything. As opposed to the things that um are a bit more unusual. That we have not been able to put in our capital improvement plan.
Well, there, there's no commitment on that now, and what I'm going over is some of the thoughts that we had, which certainly hasn't been approved yet. But it's been, we've been assuming that we were going, we financed this year's and next year's bus to ARPA. There's nothing documented for next year's bus, and it's still in discussions state.
I hear you say, you, I hear you say, we've been assuming, but I don't know who we is.
Okay, I've been assuming based on.
Okay, thank you.
For last, for our last bus that we bought through ARPA funds. That the recommendation that I would make, the board would go along with for next year's ARPA funds. That's not carved in stone or anything, it's just a, a recommendation, and I apologize if it's an assumption that I made that I should have. But if and when, to get back to my point, if and when. And I don't think we're at a point right now, we want to call a town meeting, but if we were to call a meeting. To consider expenditures of ARPA funds and bring them before the board, we'll need two things. We'll need a, a vote with a majority from the board of selectmen to do that. And then, of course, we'll need town meeting approval in order to make that whole. And if consensus, we don't want to do that, we don't do it.
Well, we haven't even gone into the budget process yet.
Correct.
For next year. So, you know, you know, I'm not, at this point, I'm not ready to. Say that that's what we're gonna spend the ARPA funds on. You know, you, you two can, to make your own judgment on that.
No, I, that you're.
I think it's premature.
I, I, I. We can have our personal opinions, but we have not brought that to consensus with our board yet, I don't think, or has it been?
No, and what we typically, what we did before was we um, we had our capital improvement committee. Make recommendations on where funding would come from, and they haven't met yet.
Correct. The other things for potential use uh for ARPA funds, you had asked this question earlier, maybe last. We can't quite try to put together just a quick uh list of potential things for ARPA. Uh, would be improvement of the owl system and video equipment in our large meeting room downstairs. And basically moving the owl system up to our conference room here that we have. Um, the proposal that I've got in from Savage so far is five thousand dollars. Um, in the past, we've utilized the ARPA funds for that. Um, that would be another thing open for our board to consider.
Has, have they worked with Tai Chi on that?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Yeah.
Um, are you aware that the proposal's five thousand dollars, are you uh in agreement with what the equipment is that um? The other company says is required?
Yeah, so we met with Savage and went through kind of what we thought the needs were, and I put together a quote. And I think we sent some comments back. Um, just as far as specific equipment. Um, but from what I saw, it seemed reflective of the meeting that we had with them in the, in the town hall.
And so you're in agreement that this is the appropriate um? Um, components that are needed?
Yeah, yeah, the, the idea was to basically get the entire system. Set up so that there was not even plug and play, it was just ready to go. Um, and that, you know, it was, it was with a focus on ease of use for the various boards and commissions, so. Um, I, I think that that's probably right in line with what other towns are spending as well.
Good thinking on the ease of use, thank you.
I, I've had that concern expressed to me from several chairman, and I think. That's been our goal, is try to get that as user friendly, uh for those of us that are less apt to. To be able to deal with IT stuff. Other.
This money approved. From, from the time we get the money approved.
Say that again.
Do you have any kind of idea, um, idea of the timetable from Savage, once we have this money approved? For them to get this in?
Every time I look into that because of, of supply chain issues. Um, there are different times, the last time I talked to Savage about this, which was over a month ago. We probably had a thirty to sixty day wait, um, just to get the uh equipment in.
Could be worse, the, um, when we look at the ARPA that's been spent to date. What I have is. Uh, was sent out. For this meeting, um, we have our approved, our authorized extended expenditures. Were nine hundred fifty three thousand sixteen dollars. Unauthorized are seventy five thousand two ninety three, what is unauthorized?
Those were expenditures that. Were made without going to town meeting on it, I believe during your term, Catherine.
What we did was during those town meetings, during those town meetings, we got approval. On those things that had already been done. So I'm curious as to what these, the seventy five thousand dollars uh breaks down to, so if someone could send me that information, that would be great.
We will do that.
Thank you. So what we really have left is basically. Uh, two hundred and something thousand dollars.
Correct, correct.
And so when I think about, like, like I said, the uh. Uh, van or bus or whatever, you know, small bus. Um, I'm looking at how much money we really have left to use for ARPA. We also have talked about having, um, helping our businesses in town. And we've allocated a certain amount of money. Uh, I think that was.
I think those two things have already come off the bottom line, if I remember, on the balance that were left, is that correct, Chris?
They did?
Yes.
Set aside.
Set aside.
They were added to the approved.
I think.
Okay, so they're, they're included in there.
Fifty thousand dollars, it's already been.
Right, I'm, I'm, actually, that wasn't my point, my point was. Um, at this point, we don't know if they might need more, but fifty thousand sounds like a good amount. What we do have a problem with is that we have twice allocated money for um. Uh, support for people in town through Melissa. And I think in total, I think we've allocated forty thousand dollars over the life of ARPA. And we know that money is going fast, at least that was my understanding.
It is slowed down, it is slowed down, and, and I had a meeting with her today about that. The uh state legislature did pass additional funds. For each of our families in town, they, they're going to be able to have access. If they apply for an additional, I think it was four hundred and thirty five dollars towards fuel. And uh Melissa was uh much more optimistic. This morning than she's been in the past, that we're going to be in good shape. With funding.
What we, what we have on the docket right now is five thousand for the owl system. Right, expanding the owl system. And what else that's not included in the total we've got here of what's been allocated or spent?
The five thousand for the, lack of better term, the owl system. Um, solar speed warning signs for the Ashford School. Um, I would recommend an allocation, and I'm still getting prices on updates. I'd like to use the signs that we presently have in use, although one of them is down. Um. Um, but I'd like to use additional funds to get those signs up at the school, and I'm still working with DOT. To get us uh the proper easement forms that we need to do that. And also to reduce the speed limit up there during school uh times. But I'm thinking fifteen thousand would cover the signs. Upgraded signs plus installation. That's one of the things I've had in mind.
What else do we, what else do you have in mind?
And the other thing that I had here, um, just for conversation purposes, but. Um, several of our signs, uh, well, well, we have one that's missing, that's been missing for. Couple of years now, that's got to be replaced, uh, welcome to Ashford signs. Um, over on seventy four. And. The housing authority and the senior center would like a new sign uh up at the beginning of Trenton Lane. And several of uh other signs are starting to deteriorate. And I was thinking of recommending an allocation of about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, for repla- repair replacement of our welcoming signs and uh directory signs in town exterior.
Anything else?
That's all I, just writing a few things down for discussion purposes, that's all I have.
So I'm looking at how much we really have left. So we have. Two hundred and thirty thousand, actually about two hundred and thirty one thousand left in our ARPA. Bucket. We also have an issue with the pickleball courts that if it's not covered by. The. Um.
Warranty.
Warranty, then we're going to have to eat that cost too. All right, so um. Again, th- this is why I'm reluctant on the, the bus, the small bus in, as a. Replacement for the one that we were going to have to buy anyway.
We move on?
Yep.
Okay, um. Well, I've got remarks for the good, but at this point, I'd like to add our discussion. The, for the previous motion that was passed, uh, to discuss the resolutions at the town meeting.
For the twenty year, fifteen year?
For the twenty year, fifteen year. Um, for the five thousand, five million dollar bond.
Are you asking for a motion?
We have a motion, I just moved to it, it was passed, so we can start discussion on it, I believe.
Okay, so when the public votes. Are they voting on fifteen or twenty year? Or is it supposed to be? I, I think they're entitled to that information. Uh, because it does have an impact on their taxes. Yeah, I know we haven't warned it that way, but is there, wh- what do we think is the way that is best to handle this? I realize that we're going to have what, bond council there and our financial advisor. And Jim to explain what's going on with the roof and what would go on with the financing. But then when it comes to a vote, what are we posing to the public for a vote, to vote on?
I.
It's not just.
I'm, I'm comfortable with, with supporting and recommending a town meeting. To go with the fifteen year financing.
Now, having said that, are we going to then include discussion about a twenty year option or?
I would assume that, that, and, and I briefly had a discussion, and I'm going to have a, obviously, a couple of other discussions with the bond council. Before that, she will explain the differences of the two with town meeting and ask for a motion.
But when we ask them to vote. What is the question we are asking them to vote on?
A fif- well, depending on what the motion is made, if the motion is made to go with a fifteen year payoff. You'll vote on that first, if that fails, then you would go with a twenty or vice versa, whichever motion is made first.
Chris, how is, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris, how does that jive with how we advertised the meeting? You have to give me a minute to look at the. It says to appropriate the five hundred thousand.
Five million.
No, I'm sorry, five million. There's been quite a bit um online, people discussing um this residence. So it says, and to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer of the town to determine the amount, states, interest rates. Maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds or notes.
Other details.
I don't see here anywhere where the specific terms mentioned.
With what?
Where there's a specific term of the financing mentioned.
No, what I'm, what I just read indicates who would be doing this. And it, it doesn't say about the term, no, it doesn't, it says you get to decide. So I think that our board needs to make our recommendation. Before this meeting, before the town meeting. Roger, would you agree?
I, yeah, you know, that's fine, you know, like you mentioned, a, a discussion of other details. Um, but yeah, we want to sit there and look at, you know. I, I believe that I kind of side on the fifteen year versus the twenty year. You know, uh, seven dollars per household, uh, for medium home, I mean, that's.
All right, so um. If.
In the legal.
I found it. Yeah.
To authorize the issue.
Yep.
Temporary notes to the town or an amount not to exceed five million dollars in anticipation, blah, blah, blah. To authorize the first selectman and the treasurer of the town to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities. Redemption provisions, forms, and other details of bonds or notes.
Thank you, that's what I just read to them.
Yeah.
The um. The, okay, so I think it would behoove us. Rather than have it be, you know, selectmen, first selectmen unilaterally. Deciding this, it would be best if the Board of Selectmen made a recommendation on it. I have no problem with, once we get past this, you know, this public hearing, special town meeting. With what Bill has to do and what the treasurer has to do, but I think that there's this extra step before you get there.
Oh, I, I concur.
And what's gonna happen, Bill, if I understand correctly, is our finance, financial advisor is going to tell them about the fifteen versus twenty year?
He, he is not gonna be there.
So our bond council.
I believe bond council. Will explain that.
Okay, wow, I thought our financial advisor was supposed to be available to present to the public.
He is presenting the documentation that we've got at hand, but he cannot make that meeting. He can send a representative his office if we so choose.
Okay. Just as a small aside, I hope that he will help us get past, get a higher rating than AA three. Whatever it is.
Well, in the scope of work that he did, he indicated that that's one of their talents and I certainly.
Exactly.
We're looking for that.
Here's something else that should be explained at the meeting is that. The amount that we'll be paying off. Is the amount that's left over after the. Reimbursement from State Board of Ed for the school construction grant. So we're not gonna be paying off five million dollars.
Yeah, it's about, it's a round off figure, it's about two million dollars. The town's liability.
And that's reflected in the, and bear with me, that's reflected in the financial advisors' information.
Correct.
He had.
The reimbursement, whatever the bottom line, and we're going to assume it's gonna be less than five million dollars.
Yeah, he has.
Is going to be after the sixty-three percent reimbursement from the state is.
So what he, yeah, what he's shown is that. The debt service. See, bonds two thousand twenty-four.
If you look at table two on page three. The fifteen year and the twenty year debt service. So that's what we'd be paying off.
Right, so if it's. She's gonna look at fifteen versus. So the two million four forty-nine. Means what? Because really, proposed total new debt service is three million ninety-six, eight fifty. And that's, I believe, after we have gotten reimbursement from the state?
The two million? Yes, that's the estimate.
This, okay, so proposed total new debt service is three million ninety-six. Three million ninety-six thousand eight hundred fifty. How much reimbursement did we, did we say we were getting from the state, what percentage?
Sixty-three percent.
That doesn't quite chime.
So we're getting, help me to understand, because I don't have the sort of finance background. So we're looking at a five million dollar bond. We're gonna sixty-three percent of that money back. And that goes.
To pay off.
Pay up, paying off.
Pay down.
So we're looking at that two, two million four forty-nine. And that's, that's the cost, whether it's fifteen years or.
Twenty.
Twenty years is the seventy-eight or the eighty-four, okay, alright, I just wanted to.
Let me make sure I understand, so when it has the proposed total new debt service column. I thought that's what we're paying. Chris, when we look at page three, table, I'm sorry, table three. That's the one you were talking about? It's showing. Okay, it's showing. Fifteen, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, it's showing fifteen year and twenty year, because I'm not seeing that quite right. Fifteen.
Page five. Just the twenty year and page four is the fifteen year.
Thank you. So.
Are, are we comfortable making the recommendation for the fifteen year?
I was just trying to look at, I was looking at the difference in costs. So the fifteen year, our new debt service is gonna cost the town. Three million ninety-six thousand dollars, that's about, three million ninety-six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. That's the proposed total new debt service.
Yes, that includes existing debt service.
Oh, thank you.
If, if, if my calculations are right, you're sitting here on my own calculator. Sixty-three percent of five million. Leaves the town side of it, one million eight five oh, plus financing charges.
We don't see any of that information here.
I just did a quick and dirty, took five million dollars with a sixty-three percent reimbursement, leaves a balance of. One eight five oh. One million eight hundred fifty thousand.
So what, what we're seeing here. Is. I hear the adding machine.
Sixty-three percent of five million is three, three million one fifty.
That's what I thought.
So you take that, so you take that from five million, the balance is what the town is gonna be responsibility. Responsibility to pay for, you're on the fifteen or twenty, plus financing charges.
Okay, I'm ready to make motion.
Alright, make it.
Okay, I propose that we. Recommend. Or approve as a board, the fifteen year plan. I don't know how to phrase that.
Fifteen year financing.
Fifteen year financing, it will save us. Over two hundred thousand dollars. Or, yeah, actually, it cuts off about two hundred thousand from the rest of this, and I'm not in a position to do all the math behind. Cutting it down.
Town's financial interests.
Yeah, but it's, it is the less expensive option. And certainly fits a good deal of pay as you go.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for your patience in walking us through it, because.
Thank you very much.
Like I said, I got a little bit better understanding what's going on.
It's been over thirty years since I went through this, so it's nice, nice to be refreshed. Alright. I'd like to, any more to be discussed with that?
No.
Okay, I'd like to add the. Discussion of the webmaster's position. To the agenda.
What about it? So we can make a.
I'd like to add discussion of the webmaster's position to the agenda.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we add discussion, are we gonna do a decision?
I, 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 you can make your motion that we're going to add for discussion and or action, the webmaster's position.
Very good, the motion is to add for discussion and or action. The proposed webmaster position.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, it's consecutive, all in favors, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Earlier, I had sent you this week copies of the documentation that Karen. Had got back from the union, and that she and I had discussed. And I also located the contract, not the old contracts. But the proposed contract from MAD, who is our webmaster consultant. But anyway, for you to take a look at, since then, I've sent it off, sent the agreement off to. Town Council. And tonight, after five o'clock, I got back, which I forwarded to both of you. I gave, I gave Roger a hard copy. He tweaked it a little, put in legalese in it or whatever. Basically, it's something that he feels compatible with our contractual obligations as compared to state statute regarding. Assistant town clerk, which. In reality, assistant town clerk works for the town clerk. So there, there, the statute says, you're both aware of, but anyway. I'm. I'm comfortable with proceeding on this, I, I don't use Karen every day, but since we met last week about this. With the situation with the last weekend's weather and the emergency and that, I use her probably two or three times a week. And I'm comfortable with proceeding. The, the new agreement also has, and I've discussed this with her, we're either party, either the town or she. Can terminate this agreement for thirty days notice without cause.
And this, and this is not considered a, I'm gonna call it a union position, correct?
This is an amendment to an existing union position.
Well, the reason I ask is because on the union contract, we all three have to sign it. I mean, I have no issue, I have no issue at all with this agreement. I'm just letting you know that on the union contract, whenever we do a union contract, all three of us sign it.
I would have, be happy to put in lines for you and, and. And John.
I was just looking to be, I was just looking to be consistent.
Yeah, nope.
And I noticed there's not a signature for Karen on the draft that we got. So what I'd like to do is ask for a motion. To go ahead with this procedure with the caveat, we will add the three selectmen signatures on it. And Karen's signature and receive her acknowledgement that she's in agreement with it. Then I'd like to proceed and I'd like to make the payment as stated in the document affected February first.
So moved.
Is there any more discussion?
Do you want me, yeah, I, do you need it restated or whatever?
I don't think so.
Okay, all in favor?
I, I'd just like to say before we do take the vote, I, I really appreciate Karen, she's been doing this for nine months, what my intention is. Is directly after we formalize this and I get all the signatures, I'm going to bring in this. Web consultant that I don't think anybody of us here were, where we even had until a couple of weeks ago. With Karen, who's agreed to. Take whatever class or whatever she needs to, to get more informed about the requirements of this. But my intention is to put them together, I'll report back to the board where we are, because I do appreciate her. Roughly nine months of doing this right now, without any. Other than many thanks from us for renumeration for it, so. I'll call for vote, all in favor, the motion is on the floor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, folks. Now, I'd like to add to the agenda. Consideration for discussion and or purpose or, or action. The appointment of an interim chairman to the Ashford Parks and Recreation Commission. Roger's made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Catherine, I, I know you had a discussion with, with David Rostin. And I had a subsequent discussion.
But when, when did you have your discussion? When I brought it up to you, I said it was the Friday after our last meeting.
Right, and I.
He was going to talk with you.
I had a discussion with, well, I had. That same Friday, I had a discussion with him, but it didn't exactly follow. The discussion that you had had with him.
Okay, so I think you're a little.
Let me just finish. So I had a subsequent discussion with him, a lengthy one over the phone, over the weekend. And another one this morning with him, where he actually came into the office. So those are the two discussions I've had with. And I've had a discussion with town council. About whether or not either I as first selectman. Or the Board of Selectmen has the statutory authority in view of the fact that we've been. Without a chairman there for several years now, to. Authorize the appointment of a interim chairman for the recreation. I was advised by town council that either I or the board, or the board or I, had the authority to do that. With the understanding that as an alternate. Unless there is a. A regular member. That is absent. Or defers to him, he will not be able to vote, he can run the meeting. He can set precedence or recommend to the board to set precedence, he could not make a motion or vote. Until that designation, I reviewed that with David. David did say when he had a discussion with you, Catherine, that he was on the fence. That's, that's, I'm quoting him verbatim. Him and I had some clear obligations of what my expectations were, which basically were to. Carry on the functions of a chairman for the Ashford Recreation. But my intention is, if we do appoint him as interim, I then wanna have a meeting with him. With the new secretary, Amanda, who we've appointed as an alternate on the, on the rec committee. Sherry York and Sherry Much, and to go over proper FOI protocols. I've reviewed some of the minutes that, that Amanda has done, she does a fine job, but I think she needs a little. Informational information on more particulars, what those minutes have to include, like specifying.
We also have FOI, we also have FOI training that's online.
Yeah. So, that's my intention, I'd like the board to support that. I think it's long overdue, I was assuming, I guess I shouldn't have assumed that David would be being moved up. To a regular position, because I was informed long ago and as recent as last week. There are no other regular members of the Recreation Commission interested in being chairman, and I think we gotta get a handle on this.
So, are you telling me that Dave Rostin has? So, are you telling me that Dave Roston has said that he is willing to chair that group? And he will have your full, and he will have your full support in doing that?
I am. I am telling you that, yes.
Then I'm fine.
Sweet.
Motion?
Motion.
We have a motion made on the floor to, um, appoint David Roston. As interim chairman of the Ashford Parks and Recreation. Um, do I have a second?
You have a second?
Is there any more discussion?
Uh, it is with our thanks.
Yes.
Please make sure that's noted.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. Marks for the good. Hearing none, and none, any, uh, particular items for the Board of Selectmen? Agenda for our next meeting?
Alright, well, let's get through the, through Saturday.
Okay. I'll take a motion. I've got eight thirteen.
So move.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor? No, we don't need.
Aye. Actually, you do. And usually, and by the way, can we put the time of our adjournment in our meeting minutes?
I thought we do.
No.
No, not always.
Eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Take care.
Mike, thank you.